Waiting for the thumbs ups like TV production up here. All right, welcome everybody. If we could start the meeting with a moment of silent prayer, please. Thank you. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Swager?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mrs. Brewer?
Here.
Mr. Benton?
Here.
Members of the meeting, please.
This is a public meeting of the Board of Education for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There's a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. Upon request, the superintendent of the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with a disability to be able to participate in this activity. Recording shall be made of each meeting of the Board of Administrative Aid and shall be preserved as public documents of the Board.
Thank you. There were no additions or deletions to the agenda. If I could get a motion to adopt the agenda?
A motion.
In a second.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Thank you. I have Brian Rose up for public comment.
Hi, my name's Brian Rose. We moved to Johnstown in 2008. I've had four children go through this school. And when we first moved here, there was still a building called Oregon and a building called Adams. So that's how long ago it was. And I just wanted, I thought I should just say thank you to Suzanne and to Tim because you guys have been here also, Helen. I'll get you.
You've been here for a long time.
I just wanted to say thank you because you guys have gone through a lot. The school looks completely different and you guys have, there was never a doubt in me or my family's mind that your best interest, you had the school's best interests in every single movement that you guys made. And we appreciate it. Our children appreciate it. You've impacted our children's lives. We used to come to these meetings quite often. We have to know a lot of the Board members. So you guys, a pandemic, two brand new schools, three renovations, several superintendents, a bunch of different principals. I mean, it's just been a roller coaster in and out. And you guys have done a phenomenal job and we appreciate it. So I just wanted to just come up and say thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Brian, I'd like to point out, we still play basketball. You used to play and you haven't been there in a while. So you need, after that Achilles, after that Achilles.
I had knee surgery and I'm a little bit older.
All right, all right.
Maybe I'm slowing down maybe.
Hey, those are excuses.
Believe me, I've slowed down. I'm in my mid 50s now, so it's definitely slowed.
Family gets out there maybe.
Yeah, those are excuses, Brian. I don't know.
All right, I appreciate the comments again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to presentations.
Yes, we have a presentation. Mrs. Wagner will lead it today. One of the things while she's getting everyone ready is a lot of the work the Board does to approve programs and you don't always get to see the results. We try to showcase some of those during Board meetings. So this will be one of them from the elementary school.
I'm going to kind of be an emcee, but. He told me to turn it on, sorry. I'm going to be an emcee and not necessarily the speaker, but our theme tonight is a story of a legacy. And so we want to walk you through literacy. Obviously, this Board has many positive legacies and a lot with curriculum instruction. And I've only been here three years, but so impressed with the hard work of the Board, the administrative team, and then of course, the staff and students. And so really excited to share that today. So Mrs. Douglas, if you want to come up too, and my student presenters, if you want to come on up. Today, we're going to tell you a story. This is my first one. Are you ready?
Once upon a time in a central Ohio town on Route 62. There was, there was a Board of Education dedicated to ensuring literacy for all students.
As far as it goes, you'll have to move this way, guys. You guys hold the paper.
Yes.
You guys hold the paper.
They worked with the staff of their amazing school district with courage and determination and money to purchase curriculum, to help guide instructions and give students the best education possible.
During the 2021-2022 school year, they purchased Foundations materials. Foundations is our core phonics curriculum, which addresses word recognition consistent with the science of reading. Foundations provides explicit multimodal instruction and phonological awareness, decoding and sight recognition.
In first grade, Foundations, we practice reading and spelling. Every day, we complete different activities, including drill sounds warm-up, spelling words on whiteboards and with magnet letters, decoding words, learning new trick words, and reading decodable stories.
During the 22-23 school year, there was a lot of change with building administration. However, the Board of Education and the staff of Johnstown Monroe was dedicated to making sure that all students were learning and growing. We piloted using a new tool to screen and progress monitor literacy, Akadience K through 3. Akadience is a quick assessment given one-on-one and it directly measures foundational early literacy skills that are responsive to instructions such as phonemic awareness, alphabetic principle, basic phonics, advanced phonics, and word attack skills, and also reading comprehension. It is standardized and we use this in our problem-solving, outcomes-driven model of decision-making. It gives us this data from each individual foundational skill tested and we can use this data to make decisions about instruction and intervention. We give the benchmark assessments three times a year in weekly, bi-weekly progress monitoring on each, on early literacy skills to see if instruction is accelerating progress or if instruction or intervention needs changed. The graphs, such what we have here and also in your packet, Akadience provides show data on how individual students, classes, grade levels, and our school is doing on various literacy components. At grade level meetings and building leadership team meetings, we use these graphs to jumpstart conversations, questions, and to reflect upon our literacy instruction. Children who are progress monitored have goals set up with a goal to accelerate their learning and the graphs will show data points, trend lines, and pathways of progress. We have now expanded K through 6 and also selected students beyond. Mercy Wilson from Licking County Educational Resource Center trained several district teachers throughout K-12 in Akadience. We have a district team that benches every child K-6 and selects students beyond 6th grade to get further information to pinpoint literacy deficits to aid in instruction.
And in your packet, the first couple pages are samples of individual student pathways. Obviously, blue is the top one. So in the first part, when you're looking at the Akadience data, we want the data points to be above the line. That's their growth line. We're always shooting for above-the-line growth. And so the different colors stand for well above, above progress, making adequate progress, below progress, and well below progress. And that's how we use that to determine, is the intervention working and do we need to change that up?
Along with looking at Akadience, we also implemented in the 23-24 school year, NWEA MAP, which is another assessment that we use to sort students into various groups, but it's standards-based. So in this chart that you see here, this is overall for first grade. So blue is where we want our students to be. Blue, green are the high areas. And then you have average, low average, and then low. In your packet, you have this graph, but you also have another one that just shows the overall student growth for first grade. So, and that benchmark is given three times a year. So as we go through, we want to see those green and blue become more of the chart.
This is an important part of the story because we can instruct all the time, but if we don't take measurements to see, are we making progress, we wouldn't know. And all of these things cost money and commitment from the district for resources, both financially and in time. And so we have our three, our two benchmark assessments that we use three times a year. Akadience gives us pinpoint foundational skills data. MAP gives us standards-based instruction. We can look at more holistic. We can look at listening skills in some cases. And then, if you remember, in 24-25, we added, it was kind of middle of the year last year, we added Lexia Core 5. And Lexia Core 5 is a unique program in that we can drill down to individual student needs and then it's an independent program that they can work on. It's intuitive. So if a student is learning something on the program and they're making a mistake, it gives them an immediate lesson. If they struggle two or three times, then it will flag the teacher. So you have in there a class list in which we took the whole, the names out, but you can see in the top, that class, there's four students that need teacher-specific intervention. And what this does for us, it helps us, when a teacher's pulling a small group, these students are able to continue to work on their skills. There's no downtime. There's no loss of instruction because we can have more than one thing going at a time. This just shows first grade, I believe this was the first grade, yes, first grade from the beginning of the year. When we started the year, we had 34% of our students working below grade level skills. 50, sorry, old eyes, 56% were working in grade level and 8% were working at above grade level. The great thing about Lexia is our gifted students sometimes get left out when we're thinking about our instruction, our intervention, but this can take them as far as they can go. So they can be working, they can be a first grader working in fifth grade material if that's what their understanding level is. And so you can see now, we have 15% of our building, and this is just the beginning of November, 15% are now working above grade level in first grade. 62% are working in grade level materials and then 22% we're still intervening with to get them into grade level materials. And so it's nice to have the holistic views of the assessments and then it's nice to pinpoint right down. And with Lexia, we're able to print out specific lessons that can go home. Students can work at home or at school on the program. And all of these are great gifts that have helped to add to our story. But we have more in our plot.
Right. The next piece of the puzzle is wit and wisdom. So wit and wisdom was developed with the belief that every child is capable of greatness. Students are challenged positively and productively and they build knowledge of the world and develop ELAs, English Language Arts skills. Students read and study award-winning fiction and nonfiction texts, famous works of art, videos, and photographs. These texts awaken and expand students' curiosity of compelling topics. Through their work with these topics and texts, students hone their abilities to read challenging texts and to write, speak clearly, logically, and effectively. Wit and wisdom builds strong background knowledge and solid vocabulary skills.
We talked about that rope last year, if you remember, in the curriculum committee meetings and we talked about foundational skills and the knowledge base and you have to have them both to make a great reader.
So wit and wisdom is organized into four modules and each module is a group of books that have a cohesive theme. And in first grade and in all the other grades too, we love to celebrate when we reach the end of a module. And so you're about to see one of those in action. But at the end of Module 1, the themes were, how do books change people's lives? And how do different people around in the world get books? So we learned about remote locations and mobile libraries and how there are lots of different kinds of libraries that bring books to children in remote locations. So we have an end-of-module task at the end of each module. And for this one, it was taking a fictional character that the students made up and putting them into one of the remote locations and fitting that theme of how they got books in that location. So they wrote a fictional narrative. And then we also had a visit from the Licking County Mobile Library. So they got to see the bookmobile and they got to see a real-life mobile library. And so that was really fun. And then we also learned about packhorse librarians in the 30s and 40s that brought books to remote homes in Kentucky to support literacy. So we took that idea and students did a writing project where they made a foldable book that shared information about different locations and how children in those places get books and then tied it back into Johnstown where they got to share how children in Johnstown get books. And we had three copies of it and students made their own packhorses. And we went around the school and delivered our books to people in different grades. And we got to share our stories with the other grade levels as well.
In conclusion, we want to thank you for your commitment to literacy. Thank you for your dedication to ensure that we have the resources. We need to be readers and leaders. Thank you for the story of your legacy.
And now if we could clear the stable, please? If I could have all of my packhorses and their teachers up front here for a picture real quick? And to my horses and their families, this is a really good time to hit the barn out back here.
Now we get into the mundane of the Board meeting, so.
Benjamin, great job, buddy. Oh my God, they're so cute. An ornament. I love a good ornament. Isn't that sweet? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you look at it already, Amanda? That's very sweet. I am going to hang mine on my tree.
I'm glad they gave the curriculum update for me.
I know.
That's right. That's when it gets yours, you'll go.
It's just solid. That was very good.
Alan, I expect technology to have a display as well. What'd you bring tonight?
Alan, the dog. We want to see the robot.
We want to see the robot again.
You don't have to report, Sam. We don't have one. Try to get one ready for you.
I don't know. I thought it was.
That was a necklace.
If you want to put it on the tree, okay.
He thought it was a necklace.
No, I wanted.
I think it'd be a brooch if you wanted.
It can be whatever you like.
All right.
I love how they made.
No restrictions.
I mean, they made all the horses. They made the little things to go with it.
I kind of was hoping we could have a horse.
I know.
My wife would be jealous of the horse.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be the one area that she would really like to. All righty.
And before we head forward, I want to thank the staff and the teachers because all we can do is provide tools, okay? And it takes an amazing staff, right, principals, and it takes amazing teachers to make it all work. And the progress we've made in curriculum, and it takes a curriculum committee. We have a committee that gets together and works on curriculum, not only in the elementary school, but throughout our entire school system. So it takes everyone working together to make it work and I want to thank everyone. I know everyone has left, but I see the two administrators are here. So I want to thank you and all the administrators for making everything work so well.
I'm glad you said that because curriculum is important and I'm so thankful that you're supporting it. But it's what the people bring to the curriculum and we tell them all the time, scripted curriculums aren't scripted curriculums. You, the teacher, makes a professional judgment. They didn't have to make packhorses, but it brings the curriculum alive. And those are the instructional moves that we want creative teachers to have. And so thank you for allowing us to hire amazing staff that do this thing.
Excellent. It's exciting to see the results of Foundation. That was the most exciting program I think I've ever seen, accepted by this Board. And we put the money where our mouths were, so that's wonderful. Thank you for all you do.
The kids are making books, delivering them. I mean, it's just exciting to see and exciting to see the large, I mean, the vocabulary that they're learning at such a young age, so.
It's fun. I enjoyed that they put some somewhat difficult words in there intentionally for the students to read, which I thought was impressive, so. It shows their, you know, how they've advanced, so.
That's that wit and wisdom curriculum.
Right.
You know, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but it's about building those skills, not just reading and writing. And kids can often understand story and understand vocabulary so far above what they can actually maybe read themselves. But it's that continual building of that background knowledge, that conversation. And so writing and oral speaking and conversation are all such a part of this curriculum that it may not be things that you hear about or see if you're not there day by day, but we're seeing huge gains in our students' abilities to communicate and articulate thinking.
Excellent. I like, you know, and across all the curriculum, a lot of the changes we've made is, what I like to see is, it meets the student where they're at. Whereas we used to have some high performers that weren't getting necessarily the extra to continue on that journey and continue to be even higher. That's what I like about that curriculum is it does, it meets them all where they're at and then, so you don't have to wait on the rest of the class to catch up to you and you don't have to, and if you have someone trailing behind, the teacher can, you know, work the curriculum to that student as well. So that, to me, is the more impressive side of it, is it allows all spectrums of the children to move where they need to and can and are capable of. It doesn't hold anyone back. And we see the same in the mathematics side now. You know, and a lot of that same things where it's allowing our high performers to continue to be high performers and not have to wait on the curriculum to catch up. They can continue on that journey. And, you know, we've got a lot of 8th graders that are taking high school math now. That's exciting to me because that shows that we've got the curriculum built that allows those students to succeed. So it's really hitting our gifted students as well. As much as we focus on the student aspect of it, the gifted students are even, you know, really benefiting from this and sometimes that aspect of it gets overlooked because we always, you know, we tend to look toward the negative on these boxes. When we look at the, you know, how many are below, how many are, you know, who are we trying to bring up? But we often overlook the high achievers that are now continuing on. So that's what gets me excited in those presentations to see that. You obviously had two excellent, and you had Who Nestle Road and Hausler here tonight. Excellent teachers. My son had both of them, so quite enjoyed both of those as teachers.
Well, and having this data that does let us know who are the higher-performing students at any given moment or three times a year has helped us with our win groups. Instead of always focusing on the intervention kids, we've now grouped anybody in the 90th percentile and above, even though they're not considered gifted. But we've grouped them and we're giving them the instruction of the gifted students. So I think we're going to see increasing numbers in that area as well.
Yeah, that's excellent. Thank you. All right, moving on. Board committees?
Well, we had quite a few board committees this, in the last month, I would say. So first, we have athletics, extracurriculars.
Well, do we, are we going, we had that whole meeting on the athletics as far as the, we have a couple of things on the agenda tonight. I think you'll, you see the overnight trip request for softball.
Yep.
And then we have the band choir. We talked about the band choir, girls' basketball, that whole operation.
That one didn't make it to the final agenda because that one's still in review, but conceptually, it makes sense. I talked to the Zerilleys and it'll bring it back to the next committee, should be before the next, well, it'd be, and then we'll get to committee and then the Board in December, so.
And I really appreciate it. They're a year ahead on that, so we're really looking out. Softball, I see Mike here tonight, you know, we're ahead of these and that's what we wanted. So when we're looking at these, we're not, as a Board, we're not having, being forced to make a decision tonight because you're booking the trip tomorrow, you know what I mean? So the idea of getting these things on the agenda early had been talked about and now we're seeing, seeing that occurring. The athletic renovations over at, well, at this building, in the back of this building, continue. We've run in a few permitting issues that are slowing some of those things down. So that's moving forward. I think we're looking sometime in January to February. Is that still the time?
Hopefully, hopefully late December, at the latest really, Jay. But as you said, some of that permitting has pushed us, you know, back from what we initially thought, where we initially thought we'd be.
Yeah, and we've spoke to the wrestling teams about that impact and they'll be working out where they're going to be at, at the JYA facility they've been at until we can move them into this facility. It all has to do with this building, once you turn it into students, there's a bunch of other requirements under the building code. It requires us to have things that you would not normally have to have if it didn't have students in it. So we have to permit some of those things and get some extra, we have to add a doorway, you know, for a second egress, things of that nature. So that's what is working towards on that. But we're excited because we'll have wrestling, cheerleading, baseball, softball, golf, all in this building, all indoors, all at their own facility that we've not had in the past. The fact that we're going to have baseball and softball, have indoor hitting and not have to worry about who, what time, you know, in our building because we're constantly moving around the whole area, trying to find places to hit indoor. And we're going to try to get a net that's tight enough that we can do golf in there as well. So the golf team wants to hit indoors because the problem you have with baseball, softball, and golf is the weather in Ohio. You know, we start in March and good luck, you know, it might still be snowing and we're certainly raining. So getting practice time in is the biggest deal for us. So this indoor hitting, along with some other facility upgrades, should make us more competitive because we'll actually have more practices and more opportunity to get the boys and girls out onto the field ready to play. So these all tie into that. And then we have the leaderboards that we'll be working towards, setting up some, these are all the athletic achievements. We've created some leaderboards that'll be hung in all the different areas for basketball, football, all the different sports. We're looking at leaderboards. All-time rebounder, all-time leading rusher, those types of things. We'll be unveiling some of those here and we're setting up a couple of special events to actually do those around those unveilings, so. Anything else we?
Oh, you just gave the grounds and maintenance report too. I just thought I'd listen.
There you go. All right, well, do you have anything more on grounds?
I'm speechless. I mean.
Athletics and grounds and buildings have all kind of overlapped at the same time because most of the grounds, building stuff we're doing right now is faced around the athletic side because that's our, that's our biggest glaring deficit right now that we're fixing is the lack of space. One of the reasons we purchased this building was to get the space and get the land next door because we're building the multipurpose building next door to this, which will give us some more training space and more indoor basketball, you know, just indoor space. As everyone that's ever coached here will tell you, we don't have enough gyms in this district for the size of this district. So that'll, that'll help with that as well and it'll give us some more training room for our own staff. As we grow, we'll need some more. As we grow, we'll need some more room to hold some of those trainings, and being right here on this campus, this, this building here in the lot next door, or the extension of this property will give us that room to build those, so.
Yep.
If you haven't seen the new marquee and picture that we have out front of the building that's going to be built, we're very excited about that. It's what he's describing. So if you wanna see a picture of it, when you drive by, flip your lights and you can see the picture. It'll just be great.
It's right out front here.
It's beautiful.
Alright.
The other thing for buildings and grounds I thought about that's been important to the board is we are coordinating that meeting, I think it's actually tomorrow, with our community partners so that we can make sure that we understand how snow removal and weather is, you know, roads are taken care of. That's important for a lot of reasons 'cause whether we delay, stay open, you know, we have fifty-two square miles, so it's one of the things I know the board has been important that we keep that partnership going, so.
I won't miss waking up at three-thirty to go check the roads, so that might be your job. I drive the roads every morning, call Dr. Wagner, tell him what they look like, so. Three-thirty in the morning phone calls of what the roads look like, so those'll go to somebody else next year.
We did talk about the snow removal contract too, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something we have to look at with that, yeah. Yeah, that'll come out the bid. We have one more year at that, then we'll look at that.
We have that extension.
Yeah, but sometimes, you know, just with this whole snow removal, it's, we might delay because there's some trucks that are down. We've run into issues about overtime with some of our municipal partners. Road conditions on the side of our fifty-two square miles are very different, so I think that means tomorrow I have to check my calendar. I know it's sometime this week, so we'll get back on top of that and.
Well, going into that, as we did get a first snow today, I do want the public to understand that side of it is, often people that live in the village limits here, city limits, the roads will look great, but if you live out in a county road, the roads may be horrible. So that totality has to be taken into effect. How many routes do we have? How many buses? It's not always easy, and if Dr. Wagner cancels, people aren't happy, and if Dr. Wagner doesn't cancel, people aren't happy. So it's a difficult position, so he has to weigh all of those different things, and it's not done in a silo by himself. He's talking to our municipal partners. He's talking to our bus garage. He's talking to other school districts. All of that goes into that, so it's not, it's not just Dr. Wagner looking out his window determining whether or not we're having school today. So, and it's really the, yeah, the road conditions and the sidewalk conditions. I mean, those both play into that, that decision-making, so keep that in mind as we move into the winter months.
I will. The meeting is Wednesday. I just checked.
Sunday?
Yep.
Amanda did her curriculum update a few minutes ago, but do you have anything?
You had the cutest presentation that I could never give. Couple additional things for curriculum. Where we are with the adoption cycle is social studies is our focus for now. So we are starting to ask for materials, get stuffs. Teachers will be asked to start reviewing some different curriculum options. Board members will soon also start getting materials to start reviewing, and the goal with that is for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to adopt our new social studies curriculum. We went through some report card stuff, just for our own benefit, to understand a little bit more how things are determined with that. And I know they talked about all the different curriculums and things, but they also talked about a lot of good ways we are looking to analyze how students are doing. So you guys did a great job talking about a lot of them, which means I don't have to. But I think the important thing to know is we are always looking at how we can be improving, and that's on a student level, that's on a teacher level, that's on a team level, whether that's a certain subject, et cetera. And we also have some other things that we're doing internally and have people who are supporting us to help also sort of dig into that data. Like I said, grade level, student level, teacher level, just to like make sure that we are doing the best we can to support our students. But also outside of that, some of the things we're also looking at is testing environment and how that's affecting students. We particularly talked about at the high school level, what is the testing environment looking like for those students? And are there things that we could be doing differently so that we are eliminating challenges, anxiety, stress, whatever it is that could be brought into those, that environment? And then also, Ann and I had a really good conversation, and I'm gonna give you the credit for this, but each year we've been really intentional about having after-school tutoring. So a few years ago, we had, we were looking at helping students in the summer. And then the next year, we were like, let's start looking at it in the spring, so it was really spring break towards summer. The next year, we were like, let's start after Christmas. And Ann's like, hey, first quarter trimester is over for students. We already have a really good idea of who we can identify, who's needing some support. And so, wow, buildings got some stuff together so fast, and we're so impressed and so excited that we've already seen a plan of, at each different school, how we can start even, even earlier, so, soon, supporting those students who need it in various topics. So that's really, really exciting, and the hope is that if we're supporting them throughout the year, they're doing better throughout the year. And then maybe in the summer, our numbers for the students who are needing that are gonna decrease.
Recovery reduces.
Yeah, yeah, trying to be proactive as much as we absolutely can.
And help the students feel successful throughout the school year.
Yeah, so.
Well, I do wanna point out on the curriculum committee, thanks for your guys' work on that because that's a very difficult and time-consuming, not that we all don't get it, but like when we're looking at social stuff, we'll get three sets of three different companies that wanna give you a social studies all the way through, and we'll read eight, ten, twelve different books, word by word, going through to make sure that it meets our community standards. It's not just curriculum standards, it's community standards. So you have to read all of those books. We did it through the math program. We do, so each of these curriculums, as they come through, you read every single math problem they have, every single, and it's very time-consuming, but it's well worth it because we do have to pick the best curriculum for our kids, and that also meets our community standard. So I appreciate that work because I, it's tedious work. It really is.
Oh, yeah.
But it's the most important work that we have as the board. So that's where I, you know, we have teachers that look at, it's not just the board picking curriculum. It's teachers and teacher groups, administrat, we're all doing it together, and we all have our areas that we're looking at. You know, I'm not a math teacher, so I'm looking at content and looking at community standard. I'm reading, I'm reading it differently as the math teachers are looking at the actual, how it flows, K through, you know, everyone's doing their own, and then we come back and we assess it and choose, choose the curriculum we wanna go with. So that is a very time-consuming, and that's why we do one a year, because it takes us a whole year to get through one of those.
And I will say that the teachers are so committed to that process. They are reading it. They are going online. They're looking at the platforms. They're looking at modules. They're engaging with videos. They're looking at the student workbooks. How are these interacting? They're going to the other schools, and they're seeing in the classroom what that looks like. I mean, they're really invested, which I think is great, and I think every year we've, we've felt really confident moving forward with whatever we decide because those teachers have invested so much time. You guys, administrators have invested so much time looking at so many different components. We're looking at, does it integrate with our, our scores and our testing and our standards there? So, and I do think that that is so successful is that we give them the opportunity to really dive in and feel good about what they're gonna have.
And also with the curriculum, what's nice, but no one, nothing's unanimous, not amongst our teachers, amongst our administrators, amongst the board. Nothing's ever unanimous, so when we choose something, it's an eighty, eighty, eighty-five percent of the people chose that one. I appreciate that the fifteen percent that didn't choose that one still implement and still give everything and still support it. You know, that's, that, to me, is the leadership, and that's the more difficult side of it is when you don't get what you want or what you think is best, still just going ahead and going, hey, okay, this is what we have. We're gonna move forward. Because at least when I've been in the curriculum meetings, nothing's ever been unanimous by every single person. With one exception, we had, I think, everybody chose on the math side, but nonetheless, those are a little more challenging areas. But not, you know, sitting there and complaining about the one that we didn't choose. Instead of that, our staff go ahead and they, they understand that the greater good, and, you know, it's nice because you have what K five likes, what six, seven, eight likes, where nine through twelve, it's not the same, and making sure that we're picking the right curriculum for everyone so it blends all the way through. That's the real dance that goes on, is figuring out which one marries all the way from K through twelve. So I appreciate the work that they do on that. Anything else on curriculum? Alan, the next one's you.
Yeah, I guess finance. Well, that's not an exciting one like curriculum, but it's a necessary one. But anyway, you know, we always look at the five-year forecast, and anytime we make a change, whether we spend money or we have an issue with funding resources, sources, right, where we don't have as much money as what we think we're gonna get, then we have to change our five-year forecast. And we had to go ahead and submit an annual budget to the county auditor to show that we had, our revenues were enough to meet our projected expenses for the year. The big takeaway from that is that we looked at the millage that we were collecting for the bonds for the buildings, and we found that over the years, the county had collected excess to what it actually required for the debt. So we asked the county to go ahead and make a refund to the property owners within the school district. So basically, if you have a home for a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home, you'd save or get a rebate in twenty-twenty-six of one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. So basically, that's, that's what we talk about. The one issue that we talked about at the finance committee, and we also talked about it in our work session a couple of weeks ago, is state funding is changing. There's a number of bills that are in front of the state legislature. That's gonna affect the funding for schools, we think, for next year and for years to come. And that's gonna have a real impact on our revenue stream. We just don't know which bill they're gonna actually approve, but all of them are negative. Some are more negative than others, so we're hoping for the best outcome. But it is gonna affect our revenue stream going forward, and we're gonna have to make an adjustment based on a decreased revenue from the state. So again, it's just another challenge. You know, everything's a challenge. You know, you only have a dollar, right? You can only spend a dollar one, one time, right? So you try to get as many dollars as you can. You try to spend your dollars as wisely as possible. And, and that's what we've always tried to do, is put, put our money where we get the biggest bang for the, for the dollar that we're spending. So I wanna thank my fellow board members for having a forward view on, on how we can support both curriculum, which is what we talked about, and also our athletics and our facilities. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, Alan, because the main thing you guys do is, it's what's best for our curriculum, what's best for our student athletes, and what's best for our taxpayers, because they're the ones that support the schools. So we have those three, everything we decide, we have to look at all three of those. I often have people tell me, well, you have to do with what's best for the students, and I always say, what's best for the students within a budget? What's best for the students, I'd probably have seventeen hundred teachers for seventeen hundred kids. One-on-one teaching, right? That's the best, but we can't possibly afford that. So there's always that caveat that we do unfortunately have a finance committee that has to look at those things. So it's never easy when those decisions have to be made, and remaining fiscally conservative is what we've continued to do, and, and that's the only way that we can do things like purchase those curriculum packages, add those on for the, any, any of the type of the gifted students or the intervention, all those specials, those tutors, that's all by being fiscally conservative. So when we look at some of these decisions, you have to look at, how do you, as Alan said, how do you allocate that one dollar? You can't allocate that one dollar three different ways. And, and if you do, we'll be back talking to you guys, asking for more money, and that's what we have adamantly been opposed to. I think everyone knows when I came on the board, I had promised that I'd never ask for another new levy, and we haven't. It's been thirteen years now, and we've not asked for another levy. That is the goal. We got the building levies in thirteen years ago, and we should not be asking, if we're fiscally, you know, conservative as we have been, we shouldn't be asking for anymore. The taxpayers are tapped out. I live here, and that's what some people don't recognize is sometimes we pay those same taxes as well 'cause we live in your district, and while I want great schools, I also like to make, you know, fiscally conservative plans with those dollars. I treat it like it's my house. You have a set limit coming in, and you make sure you don't overspend that. So I do appreciate the finance committee 'cause those are, it's easy to go out and quote, "spend other people's money," but those other people are our neighbors, so we can't do that. So I do, you know, appreciate the, the tough decision that comes out of finance. And for those that don't understand the committee structure, the way we work is those finance committees make recommendations back to the board. We're allowed to vote however we want, but we have trust and faith in each other. So typically, those finance committee recommendations, curriculum committee recommendations, we take, you know, we take it that they've done their homework as board members. We read through it, but we do rely on the committee structure to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing over there. And that's why the trust of the five members is critical, so that way you can move things forward. Because if we have to litigate everything out here every single time, nothing gets done. You know, it's just too much work if you're gonna come here every Monday night and relitigate everything and where we're at, so you have to trust in the other committee members. So finance does an excellent job of that, and I appreciate it.
And the challenge, and the challenge that you have is that you often sometimes say no. And you'd love to not say no to people about everything, right? You'd love to be able to say yes to everything, right? But in reality, you can't, right? It's, it's, you know, we all have family budgets. We all have household budgets. We'd love to do more than what we're doing today, but sometimes you have to say no, and, and that's a hard thing to do, and it, and it does bother us. And, you know, I can tell you right now, it does bother us when we have to say no, but, but we're trying to do the best for the community.
Alan, I'd like to add one more thing as part of the finance committee, that we also look at a ten-year plan. We look at five, and we look at ten-year plans. So this is a real long vision of what we feel we can and can't do. And as Alan has said, we'd like to approve everything, but it doesn't work that way. So we've had a great relationship on finance committee, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And we thank everyone, and when she says we're looking out afar, we have capital, you know, we have capital requirements, right? We have fixed asset requirements, right? You're talking about this building or upgrading the multipurpose, and we have some other plans for the north campus. But these all take years. You have to save money for years to have the money to go ahead and, and move in these directions. And, and, you know, it, it takes that foresight, as Ruth Ann said, to look ten years out because it takes many years to save up. It's like buying a house, right? You, you just can't say, I'm gonna get married today, and I'm gonna go out and buy a house tomorrow, right? You have to save. You have to prepare for it, and that's what this board has done over the, over the last many years that we've been all together. So thank you.
Alright, moving on to insurance. Another fun committee.
We, we don't get the presentation either, but.
Yeah, another, another exciting committee, Ann, I'm telling you.
I'd love for first graders to explain insurance.
Insurance, right.
Insurance is like going to the dentist. Nobody looks forward to it.
Right.
So we did meet, and we had a good meeting. We have a new representative as well, and we were able to meet them for the first time at the meeting. Open enrollment is going on currently. I think our representatives were on site last week, if I remember correctly. They said it was gonna be last week. And to be with our staff and answer any questions that they had, they're still available, and you can reach out to them. Our PPO and, we still have high claims on our PPO, and the high deductible is, is much better than our PPO is. We discussed that in the work session, but we've done spouse a carve-out. We've done all-new hires. Are being placed on the high deductible as of July first, twenty-twenty-five. We've also done the dependent audit. So we've really gone through and looked at everything that we can in that respect, so.
It's difficult, I think, for everyone. Everywhere in the world right now is dealing with the healthcare costs. They're, they're, they're continuing to rise exorbitantly, and, but yet we're trying to control those and still offer our teachers a good enough, you know, compensation packet to attract the top talent. So that's, that's the balance. That's the dance of the healthcare, and we're lucky we are in a consortium that keeps our prices a little lower because we far exceeded, far exceeded our, if we were out in the open market, we would be seeing forty, fifty, sixty percent increases in our insurance premiums. Because of the consortium, we're capped at, what, fifteen percent on that? We're seeing less.
No more than fifteen.
No more than fifteen. We're seeing in the eight to ten to twelve, which is high when you're still talking of a budget, but it's nowhere near the thirty, forty, fifty percent that, because we're a small pool. And that's, that's the problem with, you know, the, the number of people we have. We're small in terms of corporations that are in these consortiums. So it, if you have a few people in your district get extremely sick or have spouses that do, they can really jump your rates fast. So those are the things we're, we're challenged with. So the insurance side of this is the one that I say on my personal side concerns me the most when you look at the future budget of the district. That's the one area that can really blow up a budget in a hurry. So that'll, that'll be the, one of the major challenges moving forward.
Our claims on the PPO are running about over a hundred and fifty percent relative to premium. Our claims on the PPO are running about over 150% relative to premium. When you're there, you're in trouble. We're capped off, but we're trying.
We hit 247% in the spring. That's the highest, but it's very high.
And it not only affects us, because we contribute to the insurance for our employees, but it also affects our employees, right? Because they have a contribution portion to their insurance. So I know the staff has worked very hard to try to educate people, to try to make better decisions as far as insurance goes. And it's an educational thing, and I want to thank the Insurance Committee for leading that charge, because somehow we need to all work together, and we need to not only look at our family, but we need to look at the whole, the holistic view of the whole organization, because we're all paying for the decisions that we all individuals make. So anything that we can do to try to shop around, I know we're not used to shopping around for insurance, but that's what we've been trying to educate people on, how that has an impact, not only at the school, but also their personal finances.
All right, thank you, Anne. Thank you, Alan. Anything else on insurance?
Do you have anything you wanted to add with that?
No, that's fine.
All right, moving on to policy.
We reviewed nine policies. Eight of them are from the Neola Update 44.1. They're all very miscellaneous things. Sometimes we have sort of common threads with the policies, not this time, and they're all on the agenda for first reading.
Excellent, thank you. And then the other two committees didn't meet recently, so I don't know if we have anything scheduled for technology or economic development.
Technology, that's more of a, we probably need a couple of times a year, and probably won't need one of those till spring. Strategic planning, economic development, construction progress, we've kind of covered that through some of our other committees, so I think you've highlighted.
You had nothing on the LPDC.
I do have LPDC.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, can I talk about that?
Yep.
So the LPD, Local Professional Development Committee met, and those in attendance, the last meeting was October 23rd. Those in attendance, Stephanie Stuckey, Laura Kurtz, Renee Britton, Annette Price, Robin Wagner, Abby Fitz, and Brad Werman. Four professional growth, individual professional development plans were approved for staff. They also looked at contact hours for staff who are involved with professional development, so they approved those, and they had requests, I won't read them all, but from all four buildings, and it includes teachers and administrators. We talked last month about an exit report for local professional development, community members who have left the district, so they did a revision there on that plan for one of our former staff. They also, we talked about the conversion process, so they're using the new SSDT software as opposed to the kiosks, so they're working on that transition. And they actually, by this time now, because it's well after the meeting, the October 21st was the transfer date. They talked a little bit about school psychologists. Because there's changes at the state, the psychologist licensing board now handles school psychologists, that's a little different for schools, so something that's being navigated. And then lastly, on the committee, they talked about the science reading that was covered a lot, obviously. But they talked about that there's a five-year anniversary date that needs to be recognized for all the staff, so we're going to have to start getting people, that day's going to be here sooner than we think. So we're going to have to get people retrained, all the staff members, on the science readings, that's still required by law. And that's a summary from the Local Professional Development Committee.
All right, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda?
Resolution 25-11-227 is approval of consent agenda.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
In a second.
I'll second it.
Alan seconded.
Let me go through some of these.
Please do.
Okay. So the first item, be there for unpaid days for staff. We don't talk about the reasons for those unpaid days, but we're recommending those are approved. We have resignation, Debbie Merrill from JV Girls Basketball, you'll see she comes up later on. The next resolution is for supplemental employment, so has to be recognized as resigning from JV Basketball, and then being approved as the varsity assistant coach for basketball. You'll see some others there, including Kyle Kegley for that similar position, except for boys. Next, we covered pupil activity employment, so you can see all of the staff who are there to be recommended for working in the area of athletics. One of the things I did talk to Aaron about is making sure we get this done timely, because some of these sports have started already. And, you know, I know I have authority to hire people before a board meeting, because the board meetings always timeout, but I want to make sure to try and get this done earlier, so we talked about that. Sometimes through the background check process and even the state process to obtain their license or endorsement, they need, it takes a little bit of time, but we're working on that. So if you see those coming in a little later, that's the reason why. Michael Carrick continues to try and attract substitutes for cafeteria, and he's done a really nice job, and been pleasantly surprised this year, so we have another substitute for food service there. Volunteers, we have different additional volunteers that are listed on the agenda there for both elementary school, and then there's some for softball. And then last is the planning for the high school. I think we kind of went on this a little bit with some of the tutoring. So you saw plans. What I gave to you in the summary was not only what we, what the board approved last year, but what the expenditures were. Nevertheless, we don't get all the students, you know, for various reasons, they can't get into the tutoring, so I gave you that expenditure report, and this is what we're projecting going forward. Part of that also is to cover some missing time for one of our high school features that was out, so you'll see some coverage there. Board meeting minutes are in there. I think she has those ready for two meetings, that would be the 13th and 27th of October. And lastly, we have a finance report. And I believe that's everything, unless there's questions.
Any questions on any of that? Call the roll.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
And thanks to all those coaches and volunteers and everything else. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Because while we do have supplementals, I think everyone knows, you put in way more hours than you'll ever get back on those. So do appreciate the pseudo-volunteerism, as I'll call it.
Yep.
All right, moving on to, we had treasurers?
Yes. Recommendation under Resolution 25-11-228.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
So I'm sorry, I was looking ahead.
Alan first, yep.
And then Mrs. Thomas, thank you. This resolution is to approve a donation from Roof Management in memory of David Denman for $5,000 for the scoreboard. And I will mention, this is something we've been getting a $5,000 donation from them for, I look back at least four years, four or five years in a row.
Yeah, Dave passed away, and in memory of him, this company that he ran has donated every year the same amount. So it's a tremendous, and for those that don't know, Dave's one that kind of led the charge to get the scoreboard, not kind of, he led the charge to get the scoreboard and funded a good portion of it, and helped raise the money for the rest of that. And when he passed away, his roofing company there has, the management company has continued to donate toward upkeep and advancements of that scoreboard, another $5,000 again. So that, just two things. Dave was quarterback of our undefeated team, and that's why you see an undefeated scoreboard up there. I think he was the quarterback. I knew he was on the team, wasn't he?
He was on the team. I don't know if he's the quarterback.
Not positive, but...
That's okay, make him a quarterback.
But he came in and talked to us when they were doing that, so it was great that, you know, this is a guy, wasn't he living in like Denver or somewhere? He was living somewhere else, and I believe it was Denver, came back into Johnstown, helped raise the funds, put that scoreboard up. So that's, that's what this community means a lot of people, that's what I enjoy, is you have somebody that graduated in '72, was it? I know, he might have been a junior, said he might have been the year after. Nonetheless, moves out of state, becomes, you know, successful, but still comes back to this community to donate. And then his company is still donating in his memory. So that, to me, is a real testament to what kind of guy Dave Denman was, and also what kind of community we have here. So that, to me, is more important than the dollar amount. So I appreciate the Roof Management Limited to continue those donations.
Well, his grandchildren still attend here as well.
That's correct, yeah.
Family in the district.
Yeah, still has some family here in attending, so that's fantastic. Any other comments on this? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Resolution 25-11-229 is early graduation.
We can get a motion?
I'll motion. I'll second.
You know, there's a lot of work that goes in for students and also staff, so we certainly would appreciate if you'd approve these two students, and then they'll be welcomed back in May for our graduation ceremony.
Excellent. Any questions, comments, other than congratulations?
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Why don't you announce who the students were, should be, since they're actually graduating?
Yes, I think we should announce them.
It's Amory and Kalen.
Yeah, Amory Poole and Kalen Spies.
Yes, I just want to publicly say congratulations to them, graduating early, and we hope to see you back here in May.
More so careful about protecting student A's, but I realize it's public, you know. And maybe graduation would be right, but I'm just always so careful.
That's why I said, I was like, yeah, it's public record.
Put them on the entire list that comes to us. We don't, because we've already approved their graduation.
Because we've already approved, they won't be on that further list. That's why I was saying, we should at least acknowledge them now.
Yeah, I didn't even think of that, Tim.
Yeah, you're right.
But come spring, we don't read the whole list.
Correct. We will not read all 122 graduates here at the board meeting. We will let the graduation...
We do have the graduation.
But at the board meeting, we don't announce all 122 grads or whatever we're at this year.
Resolution 25-11-230 is approval of overnight extended student trip for varsity softball.
If I can get a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
This has already made its way through our Athletics Committee. There's more work to be done, but at the initial phases, everything looks good. If the board approves this tonight, then it allows the softball team to start to make announcements, let, you know, let the fundraising begin and arrangements. And then what we'll do is, through that committee, we'll bring updates about housing and transportation. The good thing is, and you referenced it earlier, we've really streamlined this process, and so we have other models to work off, like we used last year's baseball. So this one is really moving along nicely, and I think it meets the standards it should at this point.
What I wanted to mention to parents and future coaches out there, this current board has looked at these overnight trips out of state, and we've kind of put the parameters of these, of doing them every three years at the most, for several reasons. One, it's, they're typically over spring break, and now you're asking parents to travel on their spring break and do a baseball or softball or basketball or whatever sport it is, trip. And there's a financial component to that for the parents, because obviously they have to pay. So we felt if we did every three years, if you're on that in a sport for all four years of high school, at one year of your high school, you'll at least get to go on one of the trips. That's kind of the thought process behind why we did it every three years. That way, if you're a freshman and you're on and you don't get to go, because it's a varsity, that, you know, three years later, you would get to go to that. But we also didn't want out-of-state trips yearly, because it's quite an expense and burden on the kids to do. It's a lot of fun, it's great team building, I'm all for them, but at the same time, yearly, the benefit tends to wear down, and it's an extreme financial burden as well for some of the families. So that's why we had been looking at the different timeframes of how often do you allow it per sport? And Mike, I appreciate your work on this. You understood it, got with it, got all of our paperwork done, and, you know, the few things out there are just minor details of working out who's going to be there, not exactly how many and that. So I'm confident in what we're doing here, so appreciate that work.
One of the things we're going to do is formalize that process that you talked about too, because sometimes, you know, institutional knowledge is lost at certain points, so we're going to get a process behind it. I talked to our...
You called me institutional knowledge. Did you hear that? I appreciate that. Appreciate that. All right.
I think that was the collective. Anyway, so, but we want to make sure that we have those things documented, and I already asked Mr. Geis, our Athletic Director, to work on that.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
And I will say that in the meeting that we had, the building, athletics and extra curricular, the committee did discuss the burden that is on the parents for these types of trips. That when you're in school for school sports, you're not thinking that it is going to have a large cost to it to go on trips, things like that, and also the family time during spring break, holidays, things like that. So we want to be cognizant of that. It definitely did not go without notice, that we wanted to keep the costs down. I know softball, you fundraise, and have some fundraisers planned for keeping the costs lower on that, so. And then I know that we'd like to update that form, we talked about that, some of the questions on there, just to formalize that a little bit better, so hopefully, not to say that it's antiquated, it's just things have changed.
Yeah, it's that whole aspect.
Things have changed, and now, you know, we have...
We've alluded to it a couple of times, but really the aspect of continuous improvement, right? So we have to, sometimes things worked five years ago or longer, and they don't currently work as much, so we'll get that...
Well, and Tim has always said, we encourage students to be multi-sport. We need it, we require it. That has always been his slogan, and so I think that is a good point, that when there's multiple sports, we've got kids in sports and in band, that can really add up.
Yep.
And we have a great facility, sorry, Alan.
I'm sorry.
We have a great facility that we're preparing over here and renovating, and possibly we could do something there to have the camps there. I realize they play other teams, that's the appetitious thing during the winter time at that time, but no, I think there's some really creative moms, and we could get that, maybe a camp there in the offseason, or in the off-years, that you wouldn't be going out of state potentially, so.
And we want to thank Mike for doing the fundraising, for making it financially okay for our families. So that's a lot of extra work that he's doing, right? That's beyond being just the coach for the team. And that's Johnstown, right? Mike's been around for many years, right? Our kids were buddies years ago.
That's right.
And, you know, it takes special people to go beyond the scope of what their job is, to try to watch out for the community. So thank you very much, Mike.
Any other questions, comments on this? Call the roll.
Mrs. Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Resolution 25-11-230 is a tutoring proposal.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
I started to morph into this a little bit in consent, but I realized we had a separate resolution. So anyways, I think we talked about this in curriculum already. Like I said before, we showed you what was projected last year and what the expenditures were, so this gives you, this is similar, last year's a little bit more because of a few different student needs, but, you know, and we'll come back and reconcile the board process about the program and also the cost.
Did we include Dr. Wagner's special pizza day at the high school that we discussed in the work session?
No, I think that was something I was doing on my own.
Oh, okay.
We talked, well, because it's hard to write sometimes, because we were talking about ways to incentivize students to try to get them, you know, engaged in this process.
They get in the high school, difficult with their schedules and.
A lot of commitments, right?
And desire.
Yeah, so.
I was just gonna add, again, I think Anne did a great job spearheading this idea, but that curriculum committee meeting was on October twenty-seventh. That we brought this up and said, hey, what can we do to provide support for these students sooner? And the fact that it has been two-ish weeks, and that the administrators have a plan in place at every building and staff who are gonna help, I think that that's incredible. And so I just want to thank you guys, because that moved really, really fast.
We have a Debbie Seigler, so.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, I mean.
MJ Hatfield, but you're right.
I mean, we said it that day, and, I mean, I just, it takes a lot.
They were willing to do it, they jumped on immediately, they wanted to.
Debbie and MJ jumped on that, we talked about it, and then all the principals, you know, they turned that probably in about a few days.
And here we are now.
Well, and the good thing is, we had model last year to build off of, right? So that was good. Yeah, all the principals did turn that quickly, but Debbie and MJ really spearheaded that, you know.
I have maybe an ignorant question, though, on this. So we have these study tables, right, during the school day, before and after. Do these same tutoring help in those areas, or is this different dollars?
I'll have it for that.
Oh, alright.
Well, I think they're different dollars.
They're separate at the high schools.
Separate at the high, I just wasn't sure how, I know how we do it, I just didn't know if they're separate dollars, separate groups.
Yeah, they're separate.
They're specifically targeting specific subjects where we have struggling kids, and it matches up to what we're doing for the recovery in the summer as well. So they would actually be going to the teacher's classroom that would be providing that additional assistance.
And when does that occur? Right after school?
Yes.
Reason I ask this, and not to sound, if we have study tables, there are certain teachers that are needed at those study tables. And I don't want to pull too much away from the study tables at the high school and have that teacher be the tutor, and then the study tables now no longer getting the needed. I just want to make sure we're covering it, because those study tables, you need somebody that can do a lot of different things, teaching-wise. You know what I mean? You have a kid that maybe behind in three different subjects.
Mr. Shipton's back now, maybe he could speak to that a little bit.
I don't want to speak to, Mr. Bumbach can do everything, and what room's he in? You know what I mean? Like, that's, I don't know if you heard, my question is, is the tutoring after school that we're approving tonight, and I'm all for it, it's not that question. Study tables after, if we have the tutor, and the students are going to their room for just say math, but a lot of times that same person was the one that was doing the study tables, how's that work? Are we backfilling? I want to make sure the study tables don't suffer by having the tutors separately pulled out.
Michael, will you come up and use the mic, sorry, just because then people won't be able to hear it on the recording otherwise. And the good thing is, we have last year's model to build off of too, so you can talk on.
And I'm just not aware of how it worked, that's why I was asking.
No, that's a great question.
It's on the mic itself.
Tutoring's a separate entity altogether, so we aren't using both, or using the same teacher for both.
So does it occur at the same time, though, does the tutoring?
They occur at the, well, no, study table, well, yes, in the afternoon, but study tables we do in AM and PM. So we do before-school for study tables, as well as after-school for study tables. The tutoring program at the high school this year, just like last year, will be after-school.
So who's all doing the tutoring? And how you handling study tables, I guess, would be my question, because a lot of those, I'm assuming a lot of our tutors are the folks that used to do the study tables as well?
We have in the past, our tutoring, teachers that are doing tutoring are the teachers that are in those, and the course exams are Ohio State tested areas, content areas. So biology, ELA two, geometry, and algebra one this year. Most of our study table teachers are not, I'm trying to think, we have, Amy, you're one, right? She's. That's the only one I can think of, yeah.
Mindy Thomas. Okay, that's my concern, I mean, not to.
And those teachers are not on the same day. So, you know, if Mindy, if Mindy Thomas is, if she's doing tutoring twice a week, she would do Monday, Wednesday, but I think her day is Friday afternoon, or Friday morning. So they're not the same days, so that was the expectation.
You've got a kid that's at study table, says he's failing a math or, you know, got a below grade in math, but he's not going to the tutor, I want to make sure at least one or two days a week at those study tables, they have somebody that is math-inclined, at least being in that room.
Absolutely, no, and that, re-strategically, I strategically picked our end-of-course teachers, or at least offered them first. Those, not all of them accepted, but the majority of them did, and we use co-teaching models as well, so we have two teachers in there at one time, so that helps.
Yeah, it helps with the, Mike.
It helps with that.
I have backend data, if you want more, I'm just careful not to share specific student data, that's good, Michael.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But what we do, this is more targeted, so Debbie and MJ put this together, but for K-three students, so they're looking at the sixtieth percentile at or below. So they're trying to target there, and they're looking at that in their map assessments. They also look at, through the Acadia's program you heard about today, so the reading intervention plans, they have that. And then we're also, I know we talked at Crete, and we still don't have all the state data back, I've never seen it back this late. So it just goes through at every school I have, if you ever want more detail, because this is more targeted, though, is what it is, nothing against study tables, but sometimes you're talking about more, you know, like general study, executive function type of things. This is actually, you know, I have more specific, I even got pages of this, I just didn't give you all the details on this, because I didn't know if you wanted all this. But again, same thing at the intermediate, sixtieth percentile map, they're looking at the RIMS, again, that's Acadia's. Middle school, they're looking at students, they're looking at some of the value-added data to see who are projected to pass. Those students who meet expected growth, and those who don't, and they're using the map testing. They're also using some of our curriculum testing for ELA and science that we've adopted. And then, as Michael said, looking at at-risk students there, map, looking at Ohio State testing. And then we also look at some of the end-of-course exams, so students at or less than a seven-hundred proficiency, so we have more targeted.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I'm all for it, I just, I didn't know the nuances of that, and then I did have one more question on study tables. When, I know we do it for our student athletes, extracurriculars, what do we do with the students that aren't in an extracurricular? You know, I know they send a list down each week to the, at the high school, if your student athletes not meet those criteria for that week, they'll get so many minutes, you know what I mean, of study table. What happens to the non-student athlete, the non-extracurricular students? What are we reaching, even if we're not mandating it? I know, I get it, that we can, the student athletes are a little easier to catch and make them stay after. What are we doing for the non-student athletes?
That's this targeted list, these are the kids we're trying to get.
But is that weekly? Like, the study tables are weekly, you know what I mean, weekly grade level?
I can tell you exactly, so in each of the buildings, they have schedules set up, so like at the high schools, they start November tenth, they're going through April seventh, after-school from two-thirty to three-thirty.
Okay.
I have schedules, I can share this with the board, they're gonna do two days a week, some of that's contingent upon the staff and their availability. Like you heard, sometimes people will double between study tables and this. I'll get you a copy of this.
It'll be good, because I know we mandate the study tables, I don't know that we, we're not mandating tutoring, but we're strongly encouraging, and I think.
It's always hardest to try.
That's, and not to. Our kids that are most vulnerable to not passing, the ones that are in our athletics, their coaches are on them, you know, most of those kids are going to be pushed. It's the ones that aren't in one of those groups, and if their parental backing is not there, let me put it that way. How are we getting them as best we can, other than, you know, that's my biggest concern, is if someone's not making them go, and then if they don't choose to go, how, what can we do? I want to make sure we're doing everything we can to get those kids the tutoring that they need, because we can't mandate them, we don't have the, I don't want to sound like, we don't have the hammer of, you can't play sports if you don't, you know, do your study tables. What can we do to make sure they're getting their tutoring?
Some of it nearly grade levels, we even try to take some other instructional time and dedicate to that. And then like, so at the elementary, they'll do that, but then they also can go after-school, as long as we can arrange, you know, make arrangements with parents, so that can be from three-thirty to four-thirty. At the intermediate school, they're trying to do before-school. That has gone pretty well with some families, like we questioned that last year, and then parents will drop off on the way to work.
Drop off earlier, yeah.
Yeah, so, and then sometimes, same thing, they're trying to recapture some of the time in the day, so there could be another thirty minutes there, it's not a perfect science, as you know. At the middle school, they're after-school, and then they're also trying to get some of the embedded time if you can, so if you have an elective, maybe we could take some of that time.
Well, that's what I was wondering, in high school, do we try to, you know, as you know, I'm familiar with some of the kids that are struggling up there, and I'm trying to figure out, how do we?
Motivate them.
Motivate them to attend that tutoring?
Part of the, our budget, my budget proposal for after-school tutoring this year was incentive-based. So we have, actually, today, we had a local partner come in, and local business in town here come in and give us, I think, seventy-five gift cards.
Oh, excellent.
To use, plus, we're also providing drinks and snacks as well, which, again, if you have a high schooler teenager, like I do, you know. Right to the stomach, absolutely, so that's what we do. So those are little things, I order Gatorade, we have snacks, we have Amos Famous cookies, we have all those type of things to try to entice them for an hour after-school. I did send home formal letters to all those at-risk students that we've already identified this first quarter, so, for tutoring. So we'll have a total of thirty-four sessions, so, from now until April.
Excellent.
We'll get them.
I just want to make sure we can get them, and this is one of the reasons I've been a strong proponent of every kid in our district participating in an extracurricular, because that also gives us some extra leverage over the academic side. So if we can get every kid to participate in an extracurricular, wherever it is, that certainly gives us a little more leverage to get that child through the educational side. So, okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely, and the beauty of the high school is, the major, I mean, I would say, in the ninety percentile are in some sort of extracurricular, whether it's club, or athletics, or choir, or band, or whatever, so.
Some of the things that aren't de-tilt here is, we try to get with parents a lot of times, too, and sometimes we have to have formal meetings with them. You know, it's a tough discussion, but you can say, based on this current level of performance, there's a chance your child may not be able to be promoted to the next grade level, and those are tough conversations, but we try to have a tiered approach to it.
Yeah, excellent.
Do you think it would help if Craig posted something out there on the Johnstown Facebook page of the schedule, that they're doing the tutoring?
We could do that, I think what I'm gonna rely on primarily would be the principals giving it through their newsletters and all too, but yeah, we can look at, we can chase that with some social media.
Just a thought.
I have a high school student, I don't know, I don't hear anything, I mean, not to, if it's not in your newsletter, every time he comes home and say, how was school today? You know what I mean, like, I don't get any, there's no feedback in high school. At least with my kid and every kid that he hangs around with, you're not gonna get told any, they're not gonna tell you that there's tutoring after-school, so if I don't see it, I'm not gonna know about it.
And I think Craig does a really good job, and he has quite a following out there. I think that would be one way to try to reach the community. I mean, somebody, someone will see that and possibly get their kid to tutoring that needs to go, or suggest it. I was the same way, my son never told me when there was extra help at all, and trying to get them to go, if he'd been given Amos Famous cookies or anything, he'd have been there.
Excellent.
That's great.
I appreciate that.
I know that everybody does their best to get the kids to these tutoring sessions.
I do want to mention, I was in his office last weekend, I did not get a famous Amos cookie, although.
I think you were early.
Now, Mr. Groves had one, I just didn't get one. Yes, clearly.
They may be baking them.
Oh, yes, right, right. Alright, enough on that. If we could call the roll.
Yes. Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Buwer?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five dash one-one dash two-three-two is approval of settlement waiver and release agreement as presented.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
I'll second.
Didn't put a lot of detail in there, because it's confidential, you know, but I wanted you to make sure that, put that in front of you to vote on tonight.
Any questions, comments on this? Call the roll.
Mrs. Buwer?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five dash one-one dash two-three-three is approval of guarantee maximum price amendment number three with Robertson Construction.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
I'll read the whole, or a larger part of the resolution, so it helps to approve the GMP or Guarantee Maximum Price Amendment number three to the CMR Construction Manager Risk Agreement with Robertson Construction Services Incorporated for the District Improvements Project and authorizing negotiation and execution of the amendment by the Board President, Superintendent, and Treasurer working conjunction with other administrators and legal counsel.
Any questions, comments on this? Call the roll.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Buwer?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five dash one-one-two-three-four, second reading of revised policies.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second.
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments on any of these? We all received these last week to go over. I didn't have any.
Yeah, Policy Committee's gone through all these.
Yeah, Policy obviously went through them, anything additional?
And these are the second readings, so they would become official.
Yeah, these become official, that's why I was asking more on these, these become official after.
Yeah.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Buwer?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five dash one-one dash two-three-five is second reading to rescind policies.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second.
I'll second it.
As a reminder with these, if a policy needs more than one revision, we just rescind it, and then if it's still an active policy, we'll bring it back in its new form.
I was just gonna say that.
I'm sorry.
No, that's alright. You were so excited to explain that.
Man, he really likes the Policy Committee of. It's an exciting time, is it not?
No, good reminder.
Who doesn't like to work with Mr. Boosenberg, huh?
He's got it all organized.
It's an exciting time.
He is organized, I will say that. You ever see his dry erase, non-dry erase board?
Yeah, there's no erase in that.
His permanent marker, dry erase board? Yes. Any questions, comments on this? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Buwer?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five dash one-one dash two-three-six, second reading of replacement policies.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, I won't explain this, because maybe someone else will want to say something about this segment of the policies.
What are second reading replacement policies?
Well, that's a good question.
Because we rescinded the previous four, they were rescinded, because they had more than two updates that had passed. So instead of correcting and making all of that, we just, we just replace them with new policies. So those aren't going away, they just have new ones.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Buwer?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five dash one-one dash two-three-seven, second reading of new policies.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second.
I'll second it.
Any questions on the one policy here? Call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Mrs. Buwer?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Resolution twenty-five dash one-one dash two-three-eight, first reading revised policies.
Can I get a motion?
Make the motion.
And a second.
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments on these? Call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Buwer?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Any board comments? We're good? Superintendent comments?
I've got a few things. Tomorrow, Veterans Day, and quite a few celebrations. It starts in the morning, let me get my calendar, it starts in the morning, middle school, high school have a combined event, and it'll start at eight AM. And then there's a social or get-together at nine AM at the Performing Arts Center. And then at ten-thirty, the intermediate school will start their Veterans Day celebration. And then at one o'clock, we'll have veteran celebration at the elementary school. I'm gonna go on some time, so if you can't make it, I know everyone's busy, then we'll make sure to capture that. Mr. McDonald always does a nice job, we'll certainly recognize our veterans and how important they are to the community. I'll tell you, one of the things, this will be our, I think, first time celebrating since we got all Purple Star designation, so that's kind of nice. There's not a lot of school districts, I know in the area, that have all four of their schools recognized as Purple Stars, so that's great. Football playoffs, obviously, they sadly ended on Friday, but we certainly want to celebrate our team. And one of the things that will happen is that we will have, in the December meeting, we'll recognize all the fall sports. So we'll make sure, and Mr. Geis will have that ready for us, okay, including football, so.
I did want to mention there, on that football playoff game, for those that didn't know, the band had a issue there on the way there, the wheel fell off of the trailer, the band instruments were stuck at two-seventy in Route Three. The band was there, but the instruments were not, and a lot of parents stepped up, drove back to basically the Kohl's parking lot at Route Three and two-seventy there, got all the instruments, drove them out, and got them there just in time, so our band could play the halftime show. That's a really, really, really dedicated group of parents, when we look at the band, to drive all that way and to do those things, so.
Well, they rented a U-Haul in the middle there.
Yeah, they rented a U-Haul.
I mean, literally, the kids were running on to.
And how is the U-Haul place still open? That's what I thought was amazing, like, they usually close at five, I thought that was amazing.
It was really, the kids were running on, running onto the field as the halftime.
I saw that video, and parents were putting together the instruments right there, it was, the kids were grabbing them.
No warm-ups, but you wouldn't have known, you know.
No, not at all.
It's great to be a part of this community.
I pointed out to everyone, Jesse, that you were supposed to tighten the lug nuts and grease the zerk fittings, but clearly, clearly that work had not occurred, that was my prior job, but, you know. The wheels are already falling off, three days into it, the wheels are falling off, literally. It was funny, if nothing else, at least you get it. No, it was fun, the team really worked, I mean, right up to the final play, we got tackled at the one-yard line trying to score, I mean, that's the dedication of our kids, they didn't give up, even though, you know, that game, at the end, we were down twenty-one points, but we're still trying to score right up to the final play. So that's what Coach Carter brings to this district, is that determination. If you talk to any of those kids, I know, you know, you'll hear how much the football team does this and that, and they work, and it's twenty-four-seven, but every kid on that team would run through a brick wall for that coach, hands down, every single one of them. That's a, that's a coach that has the dedication of every kid on that team, no matter what level they're at, whether they see the field or not, they're all dedicated. Not just there, I mean, a lot of, a lot of difference, but we're building character, we're not just building, you know, we're trying to win games, we're trying to win playoffs, we're trying to win state championships, but at the end of the day, we're building young men. That's what Coach Carter brings to it, and that's, that's the dedication that we have there, and it was on display, it really was. So I do appreciate everything that, obviously, the football team put in, but. So, I do appreciate everything that, obviously, the football team put in, but all the band parents that showed up and, and went back and got those instruments. That was pretty neat to see them, I mean, they were running on the field, barely getting their instruments, trying to grab them as, or, you know, getting out to do a halftime show, and, you know, we put on one heck of a show, so, that was good to see, the fact that the kids don't panic, that Mr. Zerelli doesn't panic, yeah, there's a panic inside, but outside, they're not showing it, so, that, that was great to see.
Versity Show's coming up, it'll be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we weren't sure about that, Zerellis are always well-organized, but if we'd have made the playoffs, we would have adjusted for that, they had a Plan B, so, that'll go as, as a schedule, so we look forward to that annual event. We already talked about fall sports, so I can skip that. Can you look at your calendars, the December, the December board meeting is scheduled for December eighth, and because of our building projects, and we need some, the bidding process, I'm looking at, not even December fifteenth, but the week of December fifteenth, and I know sometimes we've been able to hold meetings on a Thursday, I wonder, checking your, your travel plans and all, would you be available on Thursday, December eighteenth at five PM if we were to hold a board meeting then, instead of the December eighth meeting?
I'm available. I already had a hold for that.
Yeah, I did, too.
I think we talked about that a bit, but I wasn't-
No, I, I've got it circled, so.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna, to cancel the regular meeting?
Postpone, yeah.
We'll postpone the December sixth and move to the eighteenth.
Yeah, the December eighth, move it to the eighteenth.
December eighth.
Yep.
Or the eighth, I meant, to the eighteenth.
Yep. If that works with everyone's schedule first, it's just, what, what's happening next, like, tonight you approved the Guarantee Maximum Price as an updated or amendment. Next, we have bidding that's coming in, you know, we're well deep into that process, and I wanna make sure that we get some cost from the vendors, and Robertson will help us organize that, and we, that information, because there's a, a window that needs to be recognized, it won't be, we won't have it ready, or it won't be ready, I should say, by December eighth. Ruthen, do you know your availability?
I don't, yet, but-
Okay, you'll check.
I didn't make a phone call to it, but I can tell you.
Okay. Everyone else?
I think it'll be fine.
Okay.
We're okay.
I have a meeting in downtown till four.
Okay.
An hour to get out of here should be fine.
Okay, alright, so I will move the board meeting, unless I hear differently, to Thursday, December eighteenth, I think it'll be here, I have to check with Teresa on the schedule and all, too, but we'll do that, December eighteenth, so watch for the date, I'll send you an invite. Okay, and that's all I have for updates, unless there's any questions from the board.
Uh, nothing, any questions for anyone? Questions? Alright, going once. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
And a second.
I'll second.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Benton?